I'd like to call and order the Board of Alderman Meeting for February 3rd, 2025. May I have your call, please?
Alderman sites.
Here.
Alderman doors.
Here.
And Mr. Mayor, welcome.
Here.
Mayor Billy.
Here.
Attorney Boss.
Here.
Alderman Sally.
Here.
And Alderman Shelby's ass.
Let everybody join us for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item we have on the agenda is the consent agenda, the council report, the public hearing minutes from January 20th, 2025, and the Board of Alderman minutes from January 20th, 2025.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Mayor, roll call, please.
Alderman sites.
Aye.
Alderman doors.
Aye.
All read and learned.
Aye. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, an ordinance adding new sections to Chapter 5, Animal and Fowl, Article 1 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of St. Clair Regarding Agricultural Animals. Minister, welcome.
I am on the right page, I apologize. All right. This ordinance adds Sections 5-12 through 5-16 to Chapter 5, Animals and Fowl, draws a line in the sand in referencing, in reference to restrictions on fowl, goats, and rabbits within the city limits. If this ordinance is passed, any resident owning such animals will have ninety days to declare and document with the city the current number of animals they have. With the exception of roosters, these residents will be allowed to keep this number of animals that they have declared and documented, whether or not they meet the separation requirements detailed within the ordinance, as long as they reside at their current property. Roosters can be declared but must be disposed of by January 1st, 2035. Moving forward, the restrictions laid out within this ordinance will dictate whether or not a property owner can own such animals. Furthermore, large hoofed animals will be prohibited within residential zoned districts once this ordinance passes. Further information on enforcement and fencing and enclosures allowed are detailed within the ordinance, I do recommend approval. So let me just summarize that for everybody. Essentially, if you, if you own twenty chickens right now, it doesn't matter whether you don't meet the restrictions or not, you'll have twenty chickens for as long as you want twenty chickens and you live at that property. If you have four goats, same thing. We're not trying to, with the exception of roosters, we're not, this is not taking anything away from anybody that currently has something that doesn't meet the requirement. It simply says that moving forward, those restrictions will be in place. So with that, I think the mayor's going to allow any public comment before we, before we vote on this or before the ordinance, you know, you can do that now?
The ordinance.
The public comment.
Oh, yes, the public comment here. Please talk to the public, say your name and address, please.
Is there a pen up there for writing it down, please?
Yeah.
Sorry, I need to do this two things at once.
That's all right.
My name is Sharon Delks, I live on Bardo Street, 1135, right at the intersection of Bardo and 130. So chickens, I know that City Commissioner Mike and I have discussed this integral part of our culture, just agricultural animals in general, this is a rural agricultural area. And I don't think that we really stop to think about that. If you don't own these animals yourselves, that's not part of your diet, that's not part of your day-to-day. There are a lot of residents here that have chickens, and we can discuss like a limit of eight or whatever. We're looking through an economic crisis, whether you want to believe that or not. I have photos on my phone, if you guys want to see them later, the egg prices in town were nine dollars and a change a dozen, which I was shocked by because I don't buy my eggs and they were fifty eggs, but they're, I don't know, they were between twelve and eighteen chickens. As a trade off to that, I already see a goat, I have two. We maintain two. Now you're talking about keeping goats, same number of animals. Well, you can't milk an animal that doesn't have babies, and they don't continue to milk forever after the baby. So if you've got a really, really, really well-bred goat, out of certain lives, you can get up to two years before you have another kid. Usually, they have two. So we stick to two. I don't need more than two goats for what we need to produce, and I live in town, I'm not crazy, I'm not trying to build a dairy farm here. But that does look another income. We are able to, you know, trade dairy with our neighbors, even with us chickens, when they, you know, call for whatever reason, give us eggs all the time. I have a preteen and a teenage boy. Hasn't anyone ever raised teenage boys before or been a teenage boy? You guys eat a lot. It's ridiculous. This kid over here is Riley, he's thirteen years old, Riley would like to be a politician one day. I don't know why, but I love him anyway. Riley can eat six eggs for breakfast. So limiting to, let's say, the eight that Mike and I had talked about, even limiting in the future, not just getting rid of, we'll go through eight eggs in a day, easy, not forget, I made brownies on the day that Riley had eggs for breakfast, and his brother wants eggs too. So as far as the goats, and we have three house rabbits as well, those are just pets, but I volunteer for the house rabbits that we consider, I did you guys the benefit of not other enjoy that you are doing this, because you don't want to talk to Joy about any rabbits, I'll tell you. I, I'm not here for this, whether I get to keep my animals or not. I live in agricultural community, not just because I want to raise them, but because I want to. If I wanted to not have goats, not have chickens, I would move it carefully, which frankly, they can still have chickens there, but I doubt they'd let me have goats. I wouldn't, I would live somewhere in the city where I would be closer to my job, where I would be closer to the majority of my friends. This is a lifestyle that my family chooses to have. And so by doing that, you're affecting my grocery bills in a way differently, which I don't appreciate, because that's already an issue, but you're affecting our lifestyle too. If I could be out of the city with us and have more land right now, we would, but I think we can all agree, land is more expensive than eggs. Costs me fifteen dollars, not when I still have chickens, it costs me fifteen dollars a month for a babipig, for like twelve chickens. And eggs are costing nine and a change a dozen. It's just not reasonable, and whether I get to keep my animals or not, I don't, that's fair to the future of us, or for anybody else who realizes how expensive it is and that there's an alternative. Any issues, we can talk about composting, so we don't have any issues with the smell of waste. Rabbit poop and goat poop are inherently smelling negative and are amazing for composting. So I think that there are better ways to go around this. I can cite eight people if their angles are off each, but when we talk about that with the dogs, as a doctrine of peace, we'll do that another day. If you're, if there's a state, give a citation for that, pay a bill. That money can then go towards a human society, there is. If your chickens are being obnoxious and you're getting noise complaints, give a citation for that. Talk about registering animals, most people in the city don't even know you're supposed to register your dogs, not show us where to register your chickens. That's about it. I, I'm hot, I think I'm on ground, so maybe I'll make your point, and just be very generous and gentle.
Nope, I'm just gonna spread more water, it'll baptize the floor some more.
Okay.
Okay, my name is Jackie, some of y'all know me, Jackie Sutt. I don't live in a residential home anymore, I live in a senior apartment. So I can't have more than my one dog, and I feel like I'm doing well though, if they let me have the one dog. My concern though is that on several levels, to be truthful, this ordinance, I think, although it may not be important to many people in town, there are enough people who would be interested in it, that throwing it into this particular meeting and then setting it up to be voted in this particular meeting is an issue. We wouldn't know about it if she hadn't talked to someone about her goods and was, it was brought to her attention that this was going to happen tonight and be discussed tonight. It's a long-term issue that St. Clair has had. I can't say whether other cities address it or not, but I can tell you that I have spent time online, and I've told my, there are no minutes from previous meetings back through 24, 2024. I know that the ones this year were kind of cut off, so that sort of thing, so that, that throws that a wringer in half. But if we don't start making ourselves accountable to the people in this city so that they know what's happening, then it's on us. So before you start throwing bills out to become ordinances for anything besides the one where it's, it deals with the public work stuff, I can't remember the names of company, is it Cockburn, what do you want to get on this one? Anyway, the things that are important to these people, if nothing else, that needs to be brought out to them. We've lost newspaper for all intents and purposes. We could make better use of the internet by posting beyond just on, on the city website, if you go on several pages in the city. And I'll tell you, several years back, quite a few mayors back, I made a promise to myself in front of the board at that time, that I was going to pay attention. I would probably never run the office, but I was going to pay attention. And when I pay attention, I'm going to share that with everybody that I can possibly share it with. So from here on out, whenever the agenda gets posted, I'll be putting it out on a couple pages so that anybody that wants to look at it can see it, so they'll know what's coming up, so that they won't, two months down the road, be visited because they all of a sudden say, you know, I could graze my own chickens and have the eggs, and I wouldn't be paying the nine dollars a dozen. So we've got to become accountable for what we're doing. We're not in a good economy, we haven't really been in a good economy, I don't think, but at this point, if we cut that off from people who might be able to do something like that, we're doing a service to the city, to residents. So again, I intend to be watching what's happening and trying to bring it to the attention of any and all that live within the city and rattle whatever papers I can rattle. Sorry for, thank you all, and I appreciate your service. I'm sorry for the water.
We did a public hearing on the animal ordinance. We did a public hearing. Next on new business, we have an agreement with Franklin County Humane Society of Missouri for the handling and boarding of stray animals found within the city limits.
Thank you, Mayor, and Mr. Board. First of all, I would like to point out that I left the E off of humane. We're going to change, we'll make sure that the ordinance is signed, assuming this is passed by the mayor, has the E on it, that is my fault, that is not Megan's fault, that is all me, and I apologize. Call it a scripter's error. This agreement allows the city and its residents to take stray animals to the Humane Society for boarding. The city will pay a sum of thirty-five dollars per day up to a maximum of a hundred, of a hundred and seventy-five dollars for the state mandated five-day hold plus a hundred-dollar intake fee for each animal delivered by either the police department or a city resident. The society retains the sole discretion to accept or deny intake of any animal. Society shall charge city only actual days up to five boarding, even in the event that the society is legally required to hold an animal for a full seven days in order to comply with the statutory requirement. Society will provide the city with an itemized monthly list of animals held and the location at which they were found. Now, I've, I've talked to Allison and their team a lot, and I am satisfied with their processes, and I do believe after kind of going through some old bills with Allison, I understand the process, and it feels to me like the process is fair. This is not perfect for us, it just, it is not, this is not the perfect solution for us, but it is the only solution that we have on the table right now. I agree that this, that this agreement is needed, and I believe that the Humane Society can help our city with this problem. But I will say that there is a sixty-day out in this, in this contract. I continue to discuss other options with our neighboring cities to see if there's a way that we can come up with some better solution. I don't know what that solution is right now, and that's why I feel like this is our solution currently. All of the conversations that I've had with you, being society, have been positive, and I think that, I think they can fill a gap here. The only question I have is whether or not we can do it cheap or long-term. So with that, I will tell you, I do recommend approval, but again, I want to stress that while we are going to move forward with this solution, assuming that the board votes in favor of it, we're not going to give up trying to find other solutions that, that may be better for us in the long term, Mayor, that's all I have.
Does anyone want to speak to that?
Hello, my name is Sharon Halper, I live at 155 Chris Light Road, Apartment 18 of St. Clair, I'm a Jacksonvilleer, and this issue was so close to my heart. I just went to an orientation at the Humane Society yesterday to be a volunteer, and I rescue a lot of cats in California where I live, in Oregon, even fed these little kittens from the time their leather, you know, the leather cat would, would not get turned in with an eyedropper. Yeah, twelve hours out of my time, and I couldn't do it in my apartment, because St. Clair Senior Apartment doesn't allow stuff like that. So I turned my car and the cat will do it. I got so exhausted doing it, saving these kittens' lives, that I actually had to put the kittens and meat in a motel twice. But thank God, and people, veterinarians and organizations that work together, those kittens got, all the kittens I've saved have got adopted out to good homes, and that's this great veterinarian in Washington who works with people, and all this networking that I've said, well, dude, and you know, I want this thing to go through, whatever you're doing. And I agree with you that it, it's not the perfect solution, like you said, but the mayor needs the permission or whatever, she needs to do this, just go ahead and do it because the cat colony that I was working with here, eight-year-old woman who passed on, she can't drive, her daughter doesn't drive. It's heartbreaking to see what happens when there's no place to take these animals. You know, in five days is five days, and every day counts, whether it's a life of a human or a life of an animal. So I want to thank you for allowing me to say something about this, and I plan on learning more about the City of St. Clair, I was raised in Southern California, and lived in Oregon ten years, so I got tired and came to Missouri for a breath of fresh air, which you guys allowed me to have. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Next, we have agreement on the Cochran Engineering for Preventive Pavement Maintenance Plan and ADA Assessment for all city roads for a mountain not to exceed forty thousand. Mr. Mayor, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and Mr. Board. We had budgeted, I think I spoke with some of you about this already, we had budgeted thirty thousand dollars for this assessment, and then after we budgeted it, I had talked to Jason, and it turns out that there's a ten thousand dollar grant if we do an ADA assessment alongside the actual road assessment. So technically, what I'm asking you to do tonight is to approve something that's over budgeted, we'll do a budget amendment later to add that ten thousand, but it will be offset by a grant amount, so within that effect, there is really zero, and the ADA assessment, I think, is an important add-on for us to kind of review our sidewalk ADA current, the current state of it all, so. But to get back to the main thing, that the PPMP plan was for pavement, preventative pavement, maintenance plan, I've done several of these in the past, and what this is going to do for us is, is we're going to have Cochran go and analyze all city, all city streets and prioritize them based upon their current condition. And so the idea here is that we have a roadmap for the next ten to fifteen years on what roads need to be prioritized over what roads do not. I think this is a first step in us moving in a direction where we start to be a little bit more consistent with how we prioritize road improvements. So I think this is a good use of our money, and I think it'll help staff a lot when we move forward and decide which roads we want to either do a mill and fill or a complete, you know, a complete redo on. So it's a very valuable document, and one that will help the city a lot as far as moving forward, road improvements, I do recommend approval.
Thank you. Does anyone want to speak to this?
Ordinances, we're ready to move on to the ordinances.
So we introduce second and then discuss, correct? I would like to introduce Bill Number 2025-5, for first and second reading by title only.
Bill Number 2025-05, an ordinance adding new sections to Chapter 5, Animals and Fowl, Article 1 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of St. Clair Regarding Agricultural Animals. Second reading, an ordinance adding new sections to Chapter 5, Animals and Fowl, Article 1 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of St. Clair Regarding Agricultural Animals.
You have to make a motion if you, to at least put it on the table and discuss it, to approve first and second reading by title only. To approve.
And if nothing happens, it dies, correct, Kurt?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We'll skip that now, we'll talk about the, yeah. Do you want to give us one last chance? Anybody, anybody want to?
The bill dies for about, any, second.
First and second, yeah. Yep.
Moving on.
I would like to introduce Bill Number 2025-6, for first and second reading by title only.
Bill Number 2025-06, ordinance for the City of St. Clair authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Franklin County Humane Society of Missouri for the handling and boarding of stray animals within city limits. Second reading, an ordinance for the City of St. Clair authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Franklin County Humane Society of Missouri for the handling and boarding of stray animals within city limits.
I'll make a motion to accept Bill Number 2026, or 2025-6. A second.
May I further discuss? Mayor, roll call, please.
Alderman sites.
Aye.
Alderman doors.
Aye.
Alderman stairs.
Aye. Motion carries, Bill Number 2025-06 becomes ordinance Number 2201.
I would like to introduce Bill Number 2025-07, for first and second reading by title only.
Bill Number 2025-07, an ordinance for the City of St. Clair authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Cochran Engineering for Preventative Pavement Maintenance Plan and ADA Assessment for all city roads for a mountain not to exceed forty thousand. Second reading, an ordinance for the City of St. Clair authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Cochran Engineering for Preventative Pavement Maintenance Plan and ADA Assessment for all city roads for a mountain not to exceed forty thousand dollars.
I move to approve Bill Number 2025-07, as read. I'll second.
Mayor, roll call, please.
Alderman sites.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, Bill Number 2025-07 becomes ordinance Number 2202. Resolutions, we have none. Attorney Boss?
Nothing, Mayor.
Minister, welcome.
Yeah, first of all, I think I've told a couple of you guys this already, but our Public Works Director, Jason Ivey, has decided to take some classes on Monday nights, and so for the next few meetings, he's not going to be around. If you have public works-related questions, you can direct them to me, and I will either have your answer and tell you your answer, or I will get your answer for you and get back to you with that. Other than that, I really don't have any other comments tonight, Mayor.
All right, and nothing for Jason?
Nothing for Jason, the, the, the Public Works Report did go out earlier today, I think everybody should have that. Any questions, just let me know.
Lieutenant, did you have, did she have anything?
Nothing.
Right. Nothing, Mayor. Alderman Sex.
I just wanted to make the board aware, if you've noticed on Facebook, the Park Board decided to have a community trivia night to try to raise some funds for Freedom Fest, so that'll be a Park Board-sponsored event, it's on March 8th. There's a flyer on the city Facebook page, if anybody wants to put a table together, lots of things inside an auction that they are working hard for. Hopefully, I think right now, the plan is to earmark those two that money to bring bands to Freedom Fest for live music. There is also a live survey that should be on the Facebook page, now is it on Facebook? There's a QR code attached, you can take that, it gives us great feedback on the direction that the community wants the parks to go. There's several questions in there about amenities that you use, amenities you would like to see, and places for your overall feedback, whether positive or negative. So if you don't mind sharing that around and giving us your feedback, it'd be greatly appreciated.
And just to add on to that, Alderman Sites, if, if you are computer delitrate, we have hard copies here at the front, and you are welcome to come on and just do it on paper, and we'll be more than happy to add what you have to, to our survey, so I had that.
Are those surveys anonymous, or they can be distributed to anyone?
I think they're anonymous.
Yes.
You said it was March 8th? For the trivia?
Yes, the trivia is March 8th.
And a hundred dollars for tables?
Yes, tables of eight are a hundred dollars. There'll be a fifty-fifty raffle, it's assigned on auction, there's a prize, a cash prize for the winning table, and the best decorated table, so you're encouraged to use your creativity and come up with the best themed table that you can thought of.
And that goes to the music for Freedom Fest?
Freedom Fest in general, unless there, yes. If there's extra, a lot of other things, but right now, the main focus is on bringing bands to Freedom Fest.
Do any of the other have?
I do have a question. So just so I'm clear, since the
So just so unclear, since the animal ordinance died, it's not being picked up and then going to be brought back again, correct? Like, is it?
It can't for one year.
For one year, okay.
If it died the way it died, it is dead and cannot come back for at least a year. We'll have public comment just a moment.
The only thing I have is that there was a lot of hours, a lot of compromise spent on this ordinance for the animals, with protections put in place, and it is disheartening that this is what happened tonight even after the recommendation. Is there anybody wish from the public?
I have, I have a question about the survey. Are those hard copies available anywhere else in the city for people, or do they need to come here?
No, they don't need to come here, but anybody who has a cell phone can scan the QR code and just do it from their phone.
Okay.
That QR code is available here, it's available on the city website, it's available on the city's Facebook page, and we won't be using the QR code, but we'll also be putting it out on our Code Red announcement as well. Our hope is that we get as many, I mean, we want, we want your input, we want the citizens' input, so that we can kind of start to put together a plan for what we need to focus on moving forward. It's about the citizens using our parks, and so we want to try and improve the things that the citizens want, citizens want to see.
I know personally how hard that is.
Alyssa, the hope from the Park Board was that there would be hard copies of bad pong at places like the library and possibly the license office and places where people gather, that they'll, who will allow us to put them up and have them, so that at least they can scan the QR code when they're passing through the library.
Is there a possibility of having some of at the schools, as well as possibly hard copies being delivered to the senior homes? Where seniors are the ones that, you know, these two can drive, but a lot of them can't, and they don't know how to use phones, as you mentioned.
Right. The copy that's on Facebook can be printed out and on wherever anybody wants to hang it. We're going to do our best to try and get it around. I do plan on taking it to the library and places like that, but I can't be everywhere.
No, no, I'm just thinking, it would be pretty, and I'm volunteering myself here, it's pretty simple to get an email list together and then just auto send, I want this to go to the librarian and to this person at the different school districts and have that up because it's workhorse.
Well, I can certainly issue a copy.
Is anybody else from the public wish to address the board? Um, our next regular meeting will be on the 24th, the fourth of Monday, Tuesday, the holiday, at 7:00 p.m. If there's nothing further, I'll send them to the ground.
Next one, to the room.
Second.
On paper.